Good evening, we're gonna call tonight's meeting of the City Commission to order. Will you please draw me into the flex seat?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that has any comments under public input? Would like to speak on any matter? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second, roll call vote.
Gray.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ketterman.
Aye.
Menzel.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Next item, public hearing, proposed 2018 budget. City of Pittsburgh advertised for a public hearing to be held on August 8, 2017, at the City Commission Meeting Room, commencing at 5:30 PM, located in Law Enforcement Center 201, uh, 201 North Pine, for the purpose of hearing and answering questions relating to the proposed 2018 budget. Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. Uh, I advertised in the Morning Sun for a public hearing on the 2018 budget as required by law. So, you need to open it up for a public hearing and see if there's anybody here that wants to discuss the budget.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and open up the meeting to, for a public hearing. Anyone here that would like to speak on anything related to the 2018 budget? Alright, seeing none, go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there any other questions or comments from the peanut gallery?
Not from this none.
Alright, do we have a motion to approve?
Go move.
On second.
Alright, it's been moved in second, all votes in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Alright. I need, uh, before you guys all leave tonight, I need you to sign this state certificate document, please.
Will do.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you Jamie. Next item, special presentation, Imagine Pittsburgh 2030. Members of the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 Steering Committee will provide information regarding the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 Initiative. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. Uh, very pleased to report to you tonight on the progress of the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 Plan. Uh, I'll introduce Joe Dela Segua here in just a moment. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Joe and Commissioner Johnson for their leadership in co-chairing the Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 process. It's been a, it's been a timely, uh, it's taken quite a while to, to update this. Commissioner Ketterman has been involved in our steering committee as well. Uh, but we're really at the point now where it's been so high level that we didn't want to go much lower until we, we got some public input to make sure that the direction that we're going is consistent with where the, the community wants to go. We have, uh, we've really been on a whirlwind tour for the, the last week or so. Uh, nine presentations, four civic clubs, four town hall meetings, and then this is the, the culmination here tonight, but, uh...
How were your, how were your town hall meetings attended?
Not very well attended. Uh, we got most of our attendance through the, through the civic clubs. I, I would say between the two Rotary Clubs, the, the Kiwanis Club and the Young Professionals Club, uh, we got, you know, close to, I would say, a hundred thirty, a hundred fifty or so total, but the, the town hall meetings weren't terribly well, um, as far as people coming down. The, the best town hall meeting was actually here in the, the Law Enforcement Center a week ago tonight. Uh, we had probably fifteen to twenty or so in a very engaged group. They gave us a lot of good feedback.
Good, okay.
So, without any further ado, I'll introduce our, one of our co-chairs, Joe Dela Segua. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks. Good evening, commissioners, thank you for having us. Um, I'm very excited about this process, just to give you a little bit of history. When this was initiated, 2012, uh, I remember being the, one of the people that was watching this thing be set up and the number of people that were brought into the conversation and then the ending document. And it was actually that process that inspired me to step up some of my civic engagement. And I think it was because when we have a plan, and there was a feeling that we weren't just floating, but we actually had somewhere that we were going, it was very inspirational. So it was exciting to be invited to, uh, work with, with Jeremy and Jeff Poe in this endeavor. Couple things I'd like to say is, is, and talked about Rotary today, was the mojo. Uh, the amount of momentum that we have in this community is tremendous. So thank you for your leadership during the last several years. Uh, we are in a good place, and it showed as we started dreaming, we found that basically what maybe we were talking about five, six years ago was a baseline, but really we were able to go beyond that this time around. Uh, Blake and, and the team that set this up was very strategic in the people that were put on this committee. Uh, we wanted a broad section of the community, we didn't want just one sector represented. So it was very intentional who served on our committees. Beyond the initial committee of Pittsburgh 2030, we also went out and each committee recruited additional people that had interest or had, um, knowledge of a subject matter. So I'd say by the time we got to this point, there were probably fifty, seventy-five people that had been a part of this process and got us to tonight. It has been set up as a conversation, one from the beginning. The first thing we did was we wanted to take a hard look at what was laid out five years ago. So we actually went through each one of the items in the original document and assessed where we were, what progress has been made, and still what was left to do. So as we started thinking going forward, we asked ourselves what things are still relevant now, five years later? What, were they relevant, and then what do we need to be thinking about in terms of going forward? I think what was more, um, impressive was the number of new ideas and focus that came out that wasn't maybe relevant five years ago. So, an exciting process. What we want to do tonight is, um, continue that conversation. We are at the tail end at this point. We, uh, besides all of the groups that went through the committees and all the discussion, we have, uh, talked to the public, and now we wanna bring it to you all and, and, uh, just, just again, do another check and answer your questions along the way. So feel free to ask as we go. I'm excited tonight to be joined by several people, um, that have been working on this. Uh, Blake will be back up here, of course Jay Byers has done some great work, and Becky Gray. So we're very fortunate to have these people for our city, and they were, they were very vital and important and got us tonight to where we are. So, um, just to back, I, uh, I'm gonna turn it back over to Blake and let him get this started. We'll go through each one of the, of the pillars that we studied, and, uh, you'll get a little bit of a feel for what we talked, and then I'll come back at the end and talk about marketing and communication.
Thank you so much, Joe. And Joe, again, is working with Commissioner Ketter, with Commissioner Ketterman on the Steering Committee and Commissioner Johnson as co-chairs, doing just a great job of leading this. And in addition to the, the city team that, uh, that Joe mentioned, obviously Darren Cameron and Matt Bacon, all very involved in, in, as we go today. I think Darren had a, a good idea. We, through our other eight pitches and presentations, we've saved the questions until the end. Might not be a bad idea if you just stop us, you know, in the middle, if you have questions, that might break it up, so that it's not just, you know, a big block of talking and then Q and A. So if we cover something that you'd like further clarification on, feel free to stop us. So, um, Joe went through all that, really the, the third item there is the one that's the most important tonight in getting your feedback and helping us shape these priorities as we move forward. So when we did the first Imagine Pittsburgh 2030 Plan, this was our mission statement, to be a progressive community where people want to live and to be very intentional about our community's growth. Since then, these are, are going to be, uh, nothing new to you. Our community has had a lot of success in the last five years, particularly for a, a community of Pittsburgh's size. Three hundred million dollars in construction projects. I hope the folks at home are, are noticing that, because that's significant for a community of our size. Over one thousand new jobs created in Pittsburgh in the last five years. More importantly, the jobs that are being created are better paying jobs. So we've seen a ten percent rise in our median income. It's hard to believe that it was five years ago where we were designated the, the poorest county in Kansas, and I'm proud to, to report that since that time, just over the last five years, we have leapfrogged sixteen other counties in terms of median income. So as people stop you and, and try to repeat that, we've got data that shows we are clearly, uh, not the poorest county. We're on the, the right path. Certainly not where we want to be, we're not gonna be complacent, but we're headed in the, the right direction, and that ten percent rise does indicate that. Becky also found a number, not surprisingly, that correspondingly, we've had a twenty percent decline in our local poverty rate. So obviously median income and poverty have a direct correlation between each other. Some of the more notable projects that make up that three hundred million dollars, uh, the Kansas Crossing Project alone was an eighty million dollar investment. That's the largest economic development project in southeast Kansas in the last thirty years, and it located in your community within the, the last year. The Bicknell Center and the Plaster Center are, alone, represent a combined fifty million dollar investment from Pittsburgh State University. Uh, certainly don't have to tell you about the, the passage of the Public Safety Sales Tax as a big victory in the last five years, as, as we did IP 2030 back in 2012. Something that we were concerned about was some increasing crime numbers that Chief Hulvey and the, the PD were reporting, and we were worried that if not addressed, they could really stifle our future growth. Uh, so thanks to the citizens and the passage of the Public Safety Sales Tax, we now have more officers on the streets and they're better equipped to do their, their duties. Uh, so that certainly was a big success. And of course, the South Rouse Expansion Project, not only making it quicker and easier to get up and down Rouse, but getting people more active, which again helps our community become healthier as well. Some of the, the bigger, uh, major business expansions, I'm not gonna read all those to you, uh, but certainly, uh, business staples in our community, all of them have had multi-million dollar expansions over the last five years, and this list doesn't even include NPC. That's in the middle of a half million dollar expansion right now. Uh, Apex Stages, which is about to break ground on a million dollar expansion. Uh, so certainly our existing business sector has, has done quite well, and thank you, thanks again to all of these businesses for not only remaining, uh, in Pittsburgh, but also continuing to grow and add jobs. Now this is the fun stuff. Think about looking out to the year 2030. What if Pittsburgh, Kansas, instead of having twenty thousand people, like it pretty well has had for most of its existence, what if we had thirty thousand? And that's not necessarily a magic number. It, it was one that the Steering Committee felt like the community maybe could, could get behind and push toward. Uh, I will tell you that thirty thousand population is, is kind of a magic number when you start talking about certain retail and certain amenities. Uh, there are some companies that won't necessarily even talk to you until you have a population number of, of that size. So think about what that would, what our community would look like if we had thirty thousand citizens. That median income, uh, as I mentioned, we're, we're getting closer to the state average. Right now, the state average is about twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred. Our average, our median salary is about twenty-six, eight hundred, so we're still about two thousand dollars short. In the next five years, three to five years, we feel like we'll pull within even and, and really be right at the state average. And then beyond five years, we feel like Pittsburgh will be, uh, our median income will be well above the state average. Think about what that would do for our community. Our county health rankings, which rank obesity, substance abuse, heart disease, um, and as Commissioner Johnson knows from his time at the, the Community Health Center, when I moved here in 2006, Crawford County was one hundred-third out of a hundred-five counties in terms of being the most unhealthy. Since then, we've jumped up to seventy-six. And the credit really goes to our local medical community for continuing to improve the, the health outcomes in the area. But what if, just like our income, what if we were at least middle of the pack and trending toward the upper half in the state? Think about what that would look like. We obviously are continuing to expand our role as a regional hub, not just in Crawford County, but also southeast Kansas, for jobs, for education, for healthcare, for retail. Think about what that would look like if we continued to grow it. And of course, a, a priority I feel like we all could rally around is what if we slow the leak of young, talented young people that feel like they have to go to another community to, to get a good opportunity? What if we slow that leak, and even the ones that get away from us, what if we get them back? Especially when they're about to start a young family. So, uh, all big priorities for us, and, so how do we get there? Any questions? So this, uh, and I've, I've now made that joke nine times in the last week, and it's still not funny. So this, Darren put this together to, to help the Steering Committee really keep track of where we were going, 'cause you can imagine the, the conversations that we're having with the Steering Committee and exactly how we get to where we want to go. And so this mind map, for those of us that have been looking at it for a year, actually makes a lot of sense. But we knew as we were doing these public presentations that we needed to break it up into chunks and talk specifically about each area of focus. So that's what we'll transition to now. And, um, obviously Becky Gray has done a great job in leading the, the housing charge for the city of Pittsburgh. Before Becky comes up to say her piece, I wanna show the Develop Pittsburgh video that Becky's team worked with Limelight Marketing to develop and show to housing developers. Whoops, let's see.
Pittsburgh, Kansas, the largest city in southeast Kansas.
Let the IT team in the back. We may start Becky early. Okay. Okay? Our point takes over. It does, okay. Alright? Thank you.
Pittsburgh, Kansas, the largest city in southeast Kansas, is driving the greatest investment in economic development the city has ever seen. In the past four years, Pittsburgh has experienced one thousand new jobs, ten percent average wage increase, and over three hundred million dollars of capital investment. This growth will continue, with five to six hundred new jobs planned within the next twenty-four months. This evolution creates an important need, homes. A recent housing study reported a lack of homes across the price spectrum, but particularly moderately priced homes, where residents are forced to wait for a home to be built or have to reside outside of Pittsburgh. Here are the facts. Two-thirds of people working in Pittsburgh live outside of the city and commute to work. Seventy-five percent of people who make over ninety thousand dollars a year commute. Fifty-three percent of survey respondents said the reason they don't live in Pittsburgh is because of limited housing options. To address this need, the city of Pittsburgh is actively seeking development partners to develop neighborhoods of high-quality, single-family homes. With over four hundred acres of land ready for development within the city limits, the city is ready to partner to minimize risk and maximize return on investment. Incentives include: benefits of the Rural Housing Incentive District, specifically property tax increment financing, providing land at little or no cost; customizing deals for each developer; expediting building review and administrative processes; facilitating local relationships with lenders, contractors, and others; considering new construction methods; and supporting marketing to drive lot and home sales. Interested in learning more about these aggressive incentives? Contact the city of Pittsburgh. We want to work with you, so come help develop Pittsburgh.
Pretty impressive, isn't it?
Can I say something before you start?
Yes, please.
Oftentimes, when we get these kind of programs like this that we produce here, they come off as, uh, not very sophisticated. And I think this really has a completely different look and feel. It's very professional, it's upscale, looks like it should.
I'm, I'm glad...
I applaud whoever put it together.
Well, that would be Limelight Marketing. I think that's probably the difference.
They did a good job.
Is that we have a, a professional marketing team doing that rather than staff trying to cram it in around the rest of their work. So, I'm glad you recognize it. And, um, just as a side note, that was, uh, sent out through email marketing and through social media marketing to, uh, targeted list of developers in a, in a fairly big region around us, in the whole Midwest. Um, and it's resulted in some solid leads, several leads to begin with, but they've kind of filtered down to about five to seven, um, developers that I'm continuing conversations and, and generating a relationship with. Never would've had the opportunity had we not had this kind of a marketing material. So, I'm glad that you recognized the, um, the impact of it. And I think we're pretty lucky to have Limelight in town for that purpose. So the Housing Committee was comprised of a pretty broad group of people. We had everyone from, uh, financiers, bankers, realtors, property owners, builders, um, and some general population involved in the discussions around housing. And we came up with three bullet points to share with you today, although within those bullet points, we could break it out into many, many sub-points. I do wanna pause for a second, though, for, uh, from a, a city staff perspective, to say how much I appreciate, how much I appreciated this document when I first took on my position, because it clearly outlined some goals for me to adopt. So it's really beneficial as an employee to have these kind of plans in place and these kind of visioning strategies in place, so that I know the work I'm doing is aligned with a higher, a higher objective. So I thank you for that, too. The first bullet point in the Housing Committee is new residential development. So like a planned neighborhood residential development.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So we, um, initiated that by, um, your approval of the Rural Housing Incentive District. That included three hundred and twenty acres, and that gave us a really good platform to start a discussion with a developer, um, for them to know that they're gonna get reimbursed for all that infrastructure cost was pretty valuable. It's also valuable to us, as we're managing taxpayer dollars, to not put that money out there speculating that we're going to get a return on that investment. So it's, it's really a win-win situation, and, uh, the developers that we've spoken to about the RID have, have been very excited about it. In fact, I quote one as saying, "I wouldn't come here if it weren't for this." So it's, it's a good tool. We're currently on discussion about the creation of a, a, a higher-end planned residential neighborhood. These homes are gonna be priced between, say, one fifty to three seventy-five. They'll be built out in three different phases. So we'll see some fifty-some homes at first, and then, then we'll phase it out. Um, the, the subdivision will include a park for the homeowners of that subdivision. It will also include a pool, a community pool. And, and I think, I think the end product is gonna be really nice. Those, those contracts are under negotiation right now. You'll see them come before you, of course, 'cause you'll have to approve the RID for them. And, and, um, we should see those, uh, before the end of the year coming into this room for discussion. That's pretty exciting. Infill development, of course, is, is perhaps a little bit more fiscally responsible, because we're not creating any more infrastructure to maintain. We're just reinvesting in the infrastructure we already have. So, um, infill development starts with looking at our current stock, which I think that if we, um, travel through lots of parts of the city, we can identify, uh, housing stock that probably needs to be coming down. So much so that our Building Services Department has, has made a concentrated effort to focus on abandoned, dilapidated, unsafe properties and push them, or I should say, um, walk them through the demolition process. We've, that department has demolished over sixty houses this year, which is a significant increase compared to the five or so per year ahead of that. So some of those parcels are finding themselves either for sale on the private market or they're finding themselves donated to our city's land bank. So we can use, uh, then, a mapping of those demolished structures and blank lots to encourage infill development. Strategies would include, for infill development, would include clustering parcels so that we can reach an economy of scale that's attractive to a developer. Um, some of the barriers that we're facing is the financing for contractors to build, um, and then also financing for buyers to become homeowners. So, um, these conversations, the, the tour that Blake and, and Joe have taken us on, has, has actually started a lot of conversation among our lending community about how we might be able to get creative locally to do some of that. So I, I think that we have some, some good outlook ahead of us for infill development. And then, of course, a, a best practice among, uh, community development is to revitalize the downtown, the core of a community. And as you revitalize that and you bring residents into that core, then you start seeing commercial buildup around it, and it just continues to grow throughout the community. So we can see the beginning of that with, um, Block Twenty-two underway. Uh, we know that that's gonna bring a hundred residents downtown. And actually, I was speaking with, um, Matt Burton, the, the lead developer for the Vecino Group about that, and he says, "Well, I hope people understand that, that this should just be the spark of a beginning of what's going to happen downtown, that although this is a major event and it's very exciting, there's so many more opportunities available for us." So some of the barriers that we can identify for downtown residential include, um, fire suppression. Uh, the cost of putting sprinklers in and fire suppression into those buildings is pretty significant. So, um, my, I have a goal to, to look for some creative funding for that. If we can bring funding in from outside, that would be great. And then also the cost of roofs, um, is also a, a barrier that's preventing us. But I think we are, have a good start, and I think, um, we have a lot of opportunity downtown. That's my ten seconds. Anybody have any questions on housing?
Becky, I have just one question. Uh, when you started, you talked about the people who served on this group. Did you have any landlords?
We did.
You did, okay.
Yep, we had, um, multiple, actually.
Good.
With respect to the dilapidated properties, you might also talk about a little bit, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, but not all sixty of those are paid by the city.
Correct.
So you might walk through how the Building Services Group has worked with owners to either have them fund it themselves, them meaning the property owners, or come up with other funding to do that.
Sure, and I, I only know a little bit about this, Cameron, so if I start speaking out of turn, please jump in. But Building Services, there's a very specific process that has to be followed due to our ordinances that we've adopted. And it includes notifying the property owner of the condition of the property and what needs to be done to bring it back to a condition that's considered safe. There's typically a hearing held where the property owner can come... So sometimes the property owner will say, "Fine, we'll just take care of it." And when that happens, um, our, our building official typically puts a timeframe on it. 'Cause you can say, "Fine, I'll take care of it, and then if I don't see you for another five years, I don't know if you've taken care of it." So, he typically attaches a timeframe to it, so he can check back in. If it gets to the point where there's not, um, an immediately agreeable... Or perhaps we have to have a public hearing either way. We have to have a hearing either way. So, um, we invite that property owner into City Hall and have a hearing about the condition of the property, make a plan. Quite frequently, the plan is that the property owner pays for that demolition. On occasion, the city will pay for it and attach a lien to the property.
Yeah, I think of all the numbers that I've heard as I've gone through this presentation, that's one of the most remarkable numbers that I can attach, in addition to the jobs and other things. But, I mean, there were years when we struggled to decide whether we could fund three or four demolitions.
Yeah.
And for us to be able to have sixty down, I mean, that, that just shows kind of the mindset and the different, you know, path forward that we're taking now. It's different than it was a few years ago.
It is. Dexter and his staff do a fantastic job, and they typically walk away from those engagements with, um, positive attitudes on all parties. It, it's, it's very much of a collaboration and a concierge service almost, more than any kind of punitive situation.
Thank you for that. Sorry to put you on the spot, but thank you.
No problem. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. Obviously, from a, from an economic standpoint, housing and economic development really go hand in hand. It's, it's like asking which wing you would rather have on the plane. I don't know about you, but I'd prefer to have both of them. If, if, obviously, you, you have to be creating good-paying jobs for people to buy homes, but if you're creating jobs without having homes, which we have been doing to a certain extent in Pittsburgh, you're not capturing the full economic benefit of the jobs that you are creating. So, moving into economic development, uh, this is nothing new to, to any of the five of you. Uh, late last year, uh, the city invested in a target industry analysis that really will help us, um, match up our attributes and the, the resources and what we bring to the table from an economic development standpoint, and match them up with opportunities. Uh, the, the general public may not realize that a lot of the, the growth we've seen in our retail and restaurant sector was made possible by a retail feasibility study that we had done about four or five years ago, that did the same thing on a smaller level. And basically, we're hoping to replicate that kind of growth with larger manufacturers. So we now have that target industry analysis. There's a very easy-to-follow implementation matrix. So we sat down with the, the city leadership team, Enterprise, PSU, and, and basically every single responsibility in that target industry analysis is being enacted right now. There are year-one goals, there are year-two and three goals, and beyond. Uh, so now bringing that to fruition and enacting that target industry analysis is one of our big priorities. Of course, the, the list of expansions I, I showed you earlier, just because we're out looking for new businesses doesn't mean we forget the ones that are here. We will continue to, to work with our existing employers and provide, uh, whatever help they need to continue growing and, and adding jobs here in our community, whether that's, uh, working with them on financing, or land purchase, or workforce, whatever that is, we wanna make sure that they have the resources that they need to continue growing. Entrepreneurism. Our local economy was built on successful entrepreneurs. We will continue to, to look for the next ones, the, the new Brandy Johnsons and the Tyler Harrells at PRG Prototyping, uh, that very well could be the, the Brock and Webb and Dean of the, the future. Uh, working with those, not only in the... Working with those, not only in the community but on campus. We know there are a lot of bright Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh State students that have a concept and may need a little bit of help, but certainly working with our partners at Enterprise PSU to make sure that every one of those opportunities is explored is something that we will continue to do. The, the fourth bullet item there is one that was not included in our economic development strategy the first time because then our, our tourism industry was really just being born and it, it revolved mostly around sports, particularly football. But, but I would give a lot of credit to BJ Harris and the Crawford County Convention and Visitors Bureau. They have really expanded the scope of our tourism trade. It, it's now not only sports, but working with agriculture-related events like the, the Forest State Farm Show and growing that even more. Working with our business community, companies like Watco, when they bring their, their vendors in, they will fill up every hotel room in town for a week. And, and so BJ has really done a good job of establishing those relationships. But we still have a few things that we need to really take us to that proverbial next level in terms of the convention and tourism trade. One thing is a convention center adjoined to a hotel. The Kansas Crossing Casino with all of its amenities really has one big room but doesn't have breakout rooms. So think about, we, we've talked to the, the ownership of the Holiday Inn Express and the Comfort Inn because there's a, a piece of land in between the two hotels. Think about what it would look like if there was a smaller convention center there that maybe had room for a 200 or 300-person convention, but then also five or six breakout rooms to where you could host a meeting, but also be able to walk to either one of those hotels undercover if there was weather-related issues or anything like that. So working on those, I know something that the Public Works Department and Cameron is, is on top of that was identified in the first IP 2030 Plan is, most of our hotels are on the north side of town. It's also where a lot of our restaurant growth has been. There's really only a half a mile separating the two, but it's probably the most dangerous half-mile to walk in, in Pittsburgh, you know, especially trying to cross where 69 comes back into the, to Broadway there. So continuing to work on things like that so that when the CBB does get visitors to town, that it's as easy as possible for them to, to enjoy our local businesses while they're here. But really feel like with Kansas Crossing and the Bicknell Center in place now, that our convention and tourism trade is really going to, to take it to that next level over the next three to five years. Any questions on the economic development priorities? You are up to speed on all of those anyway, so I knew they wouldn't be a surprise. Public wellness, I'm going to handle that one. I, I didn't actually sit on the Public Wellness Committee, but Mark Warner couldn't be here tonight. He's the one that co-chaired that. Public wellness, for those that were involved, the, the first time we went through this was such an important part of the plan that we actually delayed the first plan by about six months because I know Chief Holby was instrumental in putting this together. As we rolled our, our first plan out the first time, it was obvious that the public wellness piece just wasn't strong enough. So we stepped back and listened to the, the public and tried to beat that up a little bit before we actually launched it. But moving forward now, our healthcare sector has been a growth, a, a big growth area for our local economy. So continuing to look at how we can better support our local health providers. One, one consistent thing that we tend to hear from our local health providers, especially via Christie and the Community Health Center, is the, not, not to get, you know, too off track, but the state's reluctance to, to buy into Medicaid expansion has, has really cost our local health providers a lot of money. That's something that is, is bigger than just a Pittsburgh issue. It's something that the state is looking at. But looking at whatever we need to, to continue growing the, the healthcare sector in our community which serves Southeast Kansas will continue to be a priority moving forward. Certainly, the, the city has, has been a leader in encouraging active and healthy lifestyles, working with groups like Liv Well Crawford County. Seems the city is doing a great job of building the infrastructure that groups like Liv Well Crawford County can then encourage people to go out and enjoy our trail system. So continuing to encourage our residents to get out and be healthy is something that's going to continue to be a priority. And then that last one there is, is just a monster in, in terms of mental health issues and substance abuse issues. Again, citing Chief Holby and, and folks like Krista Posti that I, I respect tremendously. They have told us that any, anything, any issue with our community that's negative can be tied to mental health issues. And if, if we, if we as a community don't get a handle on mental health issues and substance abuse issues which run a close second, it can really derail a lot of the other things that we're trying to do. I have no idea how to do that. I'll be completely honest. That piece of paper on my wall says journalism, which doesn't lend much to, to, to this. But I think our steering committee, and Commissioner Ketterman can correct me if I'm wrong, our steering committee felt like if that wasn't included in this update moving forward, that we would somehow being acknowledge, acknowledge that it's, it's been addressed and it's not an issue anymore. But I think that the main reason the Public Wellness Committee wanted to keep that in there was so that it really remains at the forefront of everything we, we're trying to do. So, any thoughts, questions on the Public Wellness priorities? Okay, for infrastructure, I'll ask Jay to handle that.
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, the Infrastructure Committee got in the weeds real quickly when we started working on it, going through all of the different potential projects that there are out there. There's so much, there's so much need out there for development of our infrastructure that we kind of got wound up on which one is more important, what are the priorities. So we decided to take a step back and be a little bit more strategic in the, in the strategic planning process and decide, decide what really are the, the key elements that we're really looking for as we go forward in developing our infrastructure. There were three basic areas that we kind of, we, we settled on. One was making sure that we had the, the technological infrastructure in place to make Pittsburgh ready for the economy of the future. I mean, there's going to be a lot of needs. You can't do some projections about where the economy is going, what the needs are going to be for the community in the future. So we want to make sure we had those basic technological pieces covered. Second of all, we wanted to make sure that it was done intentionally, that we met all of the needs and, and through a planned process. Where we, the comprehensive planning was a, was a big part of, of the idea that we need to be intentional in our future and we needed to move that forward. And finally, we wanted to do it in a way that we knew we could sustain. We could, we wanted to make sure that the money was going to be available, not only for constructing the infrastructure that we needed in the future, but to be able to maintain it in the future as well. So those are the three guiding principles that we went, we went with. One of the, as far as the advanced technological systems are in place, it's, are you familiar with the term Internet of Things? Have you, have you heard this before? The concept there is that the, the built infrastructure, the built environment is going to be connected in, in many ways, to the internet, to each other. And, and is that, is that evolves, all right? There's several things that need to be in place, or many things actually, that need to be in place. But one of the main things is a grid of, of fiber optic lines throughout your community. You can see we've already started that and with, with the private sector as well as some of the public sector as well. So that's one of the main pieces. And as we go into the, as we lay that basic grid in place, and we want to start putting pieces in place that collect information, that allow for communication, that allow us to do control from, in a more automated way, right? And those are the, the sensors and things that we're going to be putting out there that'll be, that'll make us a more efficient municipal operation, but it'll also help the community as a whole when, as the economy evolves. So that's the advanced technological systems that we're talking about. The, the, the city has never had a comprehensive plan, which is, which is a little bit problematic because it, the comprehensive plan is, is takes it down to a detailed level where you can make concrete decisions, including funding, about what you want to do and the order that you need to do it in. And so you can do it in a, in a coherent and coordinated manner. So comprehensive plans have different layers. You'll have a land use layers, you'll have transportation layers, you'll have utilities layers, and then you put all those, you lay all those over, over each other and you get a sense of what the community needs to be, how the community needs to be built out in the future. You know, where are we going to grow? If we do go to 30,000 people, we're going to need new treatment capacities, we're going to need new lines or, or service lines. So how is that going to be done and the order it's going to be done in? That's what a comprehensive plan will, will, will lay out for you. And we need to do that along with a plan for certain areas like the downtown, which is your face of your community. How does that coordinate with your growth? Also with active transportation plans, other plans that are, that are in place now to coordinate them and make sure that we make the best use of the resources we have. And finally, we want to develop a sustainable capital improvements program that, that we can fund in the future. We're going to still build our roads, we're going to still build the, the, the walking trails. We're going to continue to, to, to expand our treatment plants as, as necessary. We want to make sure that there's funds available to build and to maintain them in the future. One of the final things we talked about was the, 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 kind of the missing part of what we provide in terms of services for our community, and that was an, an electric utility. And we're actively looking at, at how, how that would be fit into the future of, of, of the community in Pittsburgh. So those are the, those are some of the main things. Any questions about infrastructure?
Jerry, you just used that, that term about utilities. What, what was the word that preceded?
Electric utility.
Electric, okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
It's okay.
Questions?
No ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
We're on the tail end. Thank you again for the time you've given us tonight. So the, the four areas you've heard about were original areas of focus with the first imagined Pittsburgh 2030 Plan. And with the update, we've added two new areas. The, the first new area is education. And shame on us for not having this in the, the first plan because it's hard to talk about what your community is going to look like 20 or 30 years down the line if you're not talking about the, the local educational infrastructure and making sure that that's conducive to those that are going to be living here in the next 20 to 50 years or so. So the, the first priority is, our economy is really at a, a place now where our businesses, the biggest thing they need to continue growing is more workers and more employees. And, and not just the employees themselves, but making sure the employees that are available have the skill set to meet the jobs that are being created. One of the big ways to address that came about from the first IP 2030 Plan, and that's the Career and Technical Education Center that certainly the city of Pittsburgh was instrumental in helping to launch. That's now helping to shore up that shortage of welders and masonry and, and jobs like that. So we're, we're plugging that hole, but there are others that still exist. So continuing to work with our workforce development partners at CTEC, at Pittsburgh State, and Kansas Works to make sure that we have our labor force as ready as possible will continue to, to be a priority. The, the second issue there is one that kind of caught us off-guard a little bit and is a, a direct result of the Pittsburgh Area Young Professionals Group. And their biggest issue is the local childcare capacity issue. And for, for those of us that don't have children that are, are of that age, we may not realize that it is an issue. But the, the waiting list at the Family Resource Center is approximately a year long to, to get a, a newborn or a small baby in. Commissioner Johnson probably is, is aware of that. So what the, what the YP group told us was, two things are happening that I didn't realize. First of all, young families are making a decision to not move to Pittsburgh based on the fact that when they get here, they know they can't get their child into the Family Resource Center. So that's a pretty big issue in itself. But secondly, even if they do move here and both parents want to join the local workforce, they're not able to because one needs to stay home and take care of the little one while the other one goes to work. And again, our business community needs both of them. If they want to work, we need both of them doing so. So I know that Ann Elliott, Monica Hernan, Gordon Elliott have, I mean, they've been looking at this. It's, it's a numbers issue because newborn care is a, a money loser and it, it's not as easy as just hiring a few more people or expanding the Family Resource Center physically. But figuring out what that issue is and how we can better address it is really important to growing our businesses and growing our community and making it more conducive to young families to, to want to, to move here. The third one there is, is pretty broad, but, but kind of like Jay was, was talking about with 30,000 people stressing your physical infrastructure with streets and utilities, it would obviously stress our schools. So working with our, our local school districts to make sure that as our community grows, that they have the, the infrastructure they need, the, the resources that they need so that that part doesn't fall short because obviously that will require a lot more out of them if we're successful in increasing our population to, to what is possible. So continuing to advance our K-12 schools would be a priority for us as well. So any, any questions on the education component?
Just one thing on the childcare, Blake. I've had several people mention to me that, that they have problems with the second shift or evening shift finding childcare. Has that been considered in any part of that?
That, that's a great thought. Because we actually even have, we have fewer childcare centers than we used to because the, the regulations are so much tougher from, from the state nowadays. So as, as more of those jobs have been created and you're also taking away some of the options for childcare, that's really exacerbating that problem. But that, that's certainly something that we'll work into this issue as well, is making sure that it's not just the day shift, but also the night shift as well. Because we've got a lot of our companies that now in order to keep up with the production demands are running night shifts. Anything else? Okay. And to bring us home, back over to Joe Delasega from marketing.
Thanks, Blake. One of the things that hit us early on is that we have not done a very good job telling our story. We've let newspaper, we've let negativity. Maybe it's good that we increased our awareness for where we were in terms of the, the pay and where we are with being the poorest county. But the reality is there's a lot of great things happening in Pittsburgh and that story wasn't getting told. So that was the first overarching thing, we had to tell our story better. One of the ways to do that is to hire an information or a communication director for the city. That's going to be an incredible first step. It was a low fruit. It was a, it was great that we got that done so quickly. Secondly is the brand. We wanted people to be able to see a mark that said, when they saw that, they knew exactly what that brand stood for and where it's going. And then lastly is a comprehensive communication strategy, similar to what Jay was talking about. You have to do the same thing with communication. And with all, it's not as simple as the old day where you could just rely on just, just print to do that for you. With social media, take an example of, think of somebody trying to bring people to town. What tools are created that can help them tell the story of Pittsburgh? What we're looking for, and Patrick, to your point about that first video, we're looking to change the vernacular of Pittsburgh. And that's going to help us as citizens relearn how to talk about our city, how to promote our city, how to encourage people to move back. So it's very important. I have a lot, a couple of thoughts, but before I do that, I would like to, to step back and, and to show video. If you can TV up, please. This was one of the very first things, when we started talking about telling our story, we couldn't wait. We were ready to go and to jump into this because we can get started on this now. We don't need to wait for a strategic plan to come out. So we got with Brandy Johnson, another great example of somebody who's grown up in the area and stayed in the area. She created this video. Over 70,000 people have viewed it. So just as you're watching that, think about 70,000 people getting this message about Pittsburgh.
Kansas, the breadbasket of the nation. Traditional Midwest, flat farmland, and doing the same thing they've always done, right? Not so much. Down in the southeast corner, often escaping view, is a progressive evolution. Here, you'll find Pittsburgh. Born out of a hard-working and progressive mindset, the city's constant drive creates a unique forward-thinking spirit infused throughout our community. That spirit isn't manufactured or even recent. It's legit and deeply rooted. It's in how we live, how we work, and how we play. It's in our commitment to local business, to our schools, and to each other that make the city a place like no other. It's in our university. Yes, our university. Pittsburgh State isn't an enclave that happens to be in our city limits, with deep ties to our businesses, a defining role in our culture, and loyal fans the world over. It lives in all of us. Once a gorilla, always a gorilla. It's in our businesses. Pittsburgh's commitment to help businesses succeed is baked into the city's DNA. Through a dedication to the economy, this city of self-starters has changed, grown, and shifted ahead of the times. It's in our people. This unusually committed and resilient group that has always thrived on diversity, absorbed in a single purpose, to make Pittsburgh the best place to put down roots, to raise a family, and to move the needle for Kansas. And yeah, we're doing it together. All of us working toward a common vision, to make Pittsburgh a place to grow, to share your idea, and to gather, build a future you never thought possible. Pittsburgh, forward together.
Did you like that?
Good video.
Very good.
Buddy.
I would go so far to say is that's the best piece of marketing that Pittsburgh has ever seen, hands down. Like, I, there have been a few others that have come out before it, but this gives me chills. I'm like, woo, yeah, we're in the big time.
Thanks for sharing that. So let me just give you a couple of last comments and then we can open it up and see if there's anything that we missed or discussion. I'm personally so excited to be in Pittsburgh. I'm excited for the future of Pittsburgh, excited as I've ever been. And there's a couple of points in here that, that really push my button. One is obviously is this idea of telling our story. Because the reality is, we have a heart here. We have something great that's happening here. We have people that leave, that their hearts are still here, they just couldn't stay because of careers. But, you know, they can come But, you know, they can come home, one of three ways. They can move home, as Blake had talked about with economic opportunities, or they can visit, the more often we get them back. Lastly, though, they can invest. And you look at Matt Burton, who's the poster child with Block 22 of somebody, the hearts, his heart never lived here, left here, and at the same time, look what he's able to do. And there's other people like Matt out there. So I think that's exciting. The second thing is leadership. For us that have been around a long time, I think we could look around and say, I'm not sure we've ever seen the unprecedented level of leadership that we're experiencing right now in Pittsburgh. It's in, it's in every business and organization, in this education. We have lots of people that are bright people and they want to be here and they're working for Pittsburgh. The other thing was that mind map, what I think that the image to get there is, this plan isn't coming to you with a one-off idea here and another one-off idea there. It's interconnected. And we do one thing well but don't take care of another, we're not going to, we're not going to get this thing done. One of the things, we were very intentional, and Darren, thank you for keeping this in front of us, but as we would start to talk about different things, it was, but what would it look like if we get that lowest wage rate? If we could get that up? What are we going to have to do to do that? So we really looked at this thing from all angles and I think the interconnectivity is why it's going to be successful. I think the other thing, I don't know if it caught your attention, but this notion of being a regional hub. We have, we have gifts in this community that other communities would die to have. When do we move beyond local cities looking at us as competition? But how can we put, work with them and collaborate and have the resources we have and actually lift them up? And there were ways we brainstormed about doing that. They're out there and if we take that kind of positive attitude, we believe we're going to be very, very successful. The other thing is that whole alignment and synergy. That was used several different times. If we're working together, people are saying, how can I get involved? After they hear this, they want to know what they can do. We don't have the exact answers, but when we all start pulling the same direction, we're going to be very successful. And I'd just like to leave you with the final thing, that we think 30,000 is achievable. We asked ourselves, do we have the courage to say that? And then after we sat back and looked at the plans, we had a lot of confidence that we can do this. So again, thank you for anything you've done in the past as far as providing the leadership for this to happen. We hope that you can embrace this as much as our committee has. It's been a great experience for all of us. So I would just open it, one more opportunity for questions or discussion.
I just wanted to thank you and everyone who participated, not only on the main steering committee but all the separate committees. I know a lot of time and effort was put into this. And I just have one quick comment. And I noticed that as I looked at the original plan and the revised plan and the videos and the marketing and everything I've seen and the community leadership that you're talking about, I really think that more so than the changes bringing about that, it was a change in attitude and leadership in the community that's driven all of this. I recall days when we hung our heads and we just said, you know, that's just how it is, you know? And what I've seen is the change in attitude from not just people in this room, I'm talking about the community as a whole, I think has driven this plan. I mean, and driven the idea Jeremy talked about, this is the best marketing putting forward. People want the best now and they believe that Pittsburgh deserves the best. So if we can keep that rolling and use these six items as a path going forward, I think that'll encourage everyone to stay on path. So I'm excited about it.
I'm excited also. And I'll address one thing that you said, Joe, about the leadership. Pittsburgh has always had good leaders. But you're talking about today, and I think the leadership today is more broad-based. It was before centered in a number of individuals who really led. But I think today, this program that you presented shows that there's really a lot of leaders who want to be involved in this and want to make it successful. And I noticed throughout this, there's, these issues that we are addressing, whether it's mental health and drugs, childcare, workforce development, these aren't things that are only located, issues only located in Pittsburgh, Kansas. These are widespread issues. The difference being, we are addressing them. And I think that's what will move us forward. People don't want to deal with people who are not successful. And when we show that Pittsburgh, Kansas is a success, it will encourage them to get on board and help drive this train. And I applaud all these folks who worked on this project. I know it took a lot of hours, a lot of time away from your families and businesses, and I think you should all be applauding for that.
I'd like to, thank you very much. I'd also like to throw in this whole notion, we have a lot, we're very grateful for the people that it got us to this point, but I think the decision six, five, six years ago to undertake the process, and when I say, you know, I think it single-handedly brought Darren Hall here and Jay, and it's kept people like Blake. And I'm finding leaders, if there is a vision and we're working towards something, you're going to be more inclined to stake because we're building towards something instead of letting year in, year out and just, you know, feel this feeling that we're drifting. So, you know, the Marty Beesleys and Brad Hotsons and the people that Jeff Pose that there, I think we have to be careful not to discount, Patrick, to your point, anybody in the past that's helped us get to this point. We have a solid base to build on.
We do that. I think it's a good time to point out that in the first go-around, the community was such that we actually, or you actually, I wasn't even here, hired a consultant to come in and kind of lead through this process. And I know when I came to town, the consultant was still here, kind of doing the wrap-up and had led the group down this road. On this phase, there were so many people that, from the executive committee to the steering committee to the actual group that met the 40 or 50 people, and then we have a local company that can do all the marketing and it's a super high-quality. That says a lot just in and of itself about who's engaged in this community right now, what their level of commitment is, and what is possible if everybody continues to see the light and not, I'm having a crappy day, somebody caused it, I'm going to bed mad. I mean, it's all happening and there's a ton of opportunities. And so I would just encourage anybody that's watching, the main reason we do this and we always run out of time, so we never get to do it, we want feedback. This isn't a finished product. It's very close. We hopefully, it resonates with people, but if you see something you want to comment on, if you see something you don't agree with, if you heard something you're not sure what it meant, please contact any one of us and you can start with City Hall. And we'll incorporate that into the final product because the grassroots part of this is key. But I think it's important to note that there was no big check written to some professional to come in and tell us, you know, how to find the light switch. It's all happening in the community now and it's people like Joe that could do 100 other things that are making time. And Jeff Poe, who is getting ready to move and relocate, that's still carved out a ridiculous amount of time. And, you know, everybody up, everybody up here has other things they can be doing. So it's really fun to work on and it's really fun to not have to say anything the whole time and just get to say something at the end because there's so many people that are committed to it and were part of it, so.
I'd also like to interject. One thing we are getting after we've made this presentation or the people that were on the committees, we are having people come up and say, I want to stay involved, what can I do? That's exciting and we'll have to figure out ways to plug those people into the areas, you know, that they're interested in. But even today, I had two or three people that came up and said, you know, sign me up. I want to do something along to help us move that, that hadn't, had not previously been into the conversation.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
All right. Any other non-adjunct reports or requests?
I think we're good.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved to second to adjourn. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Question carries. We are adjourned.